Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to a back-to-school special session. I guess the one question most of us have is what's the status of public schools in Sarasota? In a recent article in Vanity Fair that I think was just this past May, it focused on education in Sarasota County. Yes, we made national news on multiple occasions through a lot of national newspapers. So in Vanity Fair, it said across the state, low teacher pay and the constant attacks on educators have helped create some 5,300 teacher vacancies, an increase of 140% since the governor took office and the worst school staffing crisis the state has ever seen. In Sarasota, there's over 120 teacher vacancies. And we're no longer exempt from those statewide trends. I'm just quoting one of our panelists here today. We've seen a deterioration of the desire to stay in Sarasota County, in Sarasota schools. And I would attribute that directly to the chaos that's been created in our community. That's from Theona, one of our speakers here today. So we're going to be covering a range of ground of the issues affecting education. We're going to start off with book banning with Dr. Jill Louis Spector, who currently chairs the League of Women Voters of Florida Education Action Team alongside with our local action team. Dr. Louis Spector is a professor emerita of literacy education at New Jersey City University and was president of the International Literacy Association. So Jill, I'm handing it off to you.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, and I want to thank the League for inviting me to talk today about book banning. I really wanted to talk about that because of the seriousness of the issue and the potential consequences of this intrusion into our public schools. During the 2021-22 school year, 566 books were banned in Florida across 21 school districts. And as of May 2023, an additional 357 were banned across 13 districts. That's a lot of books. So what's being banned? Well, the press talks a lot about books that had some sexually explicit scenes in them. They are being banned. But we also have other books being banned. The Department of Education has advised those who are reviewing materials to also remove any material that includes, quote, "unsolicited theories that may lead to student indoctrination" and also to bear on the side of caution. So many books have been removed from the shelves are about racism, as well as books about the LGBTQ community and themes in keeping with the Don't Say Gay and the Anti-Racism. I want to point out that the League of Women Voters promotes diversity and non-discrimination. And while we don't believe that every single book should be on the bookshelf in a school library or classroom library, our view is that all children need to have access to books that they can relate to and to history that is truthful and with stories that have characters like themselves. So who's raising objections? How come so many books have been banned? While library media specialists and others who work in the schools are curating books that are looking for objectionable material, they're getting a lot of help from other people. When HB 1467 was signed into law in March of 2022, it required that parents be given the opportunity to review books that were in the schools. The League believes that no one person should make a decision for the appropriateness of a book for all kids. You don't like your child reading it, that's fine. But is it right for you to say that no kid can read it? We don't think so. There are two ways that books are being banned. And districts, I have to tell you, districts that right now are reviewing their policies for banning books because although they may have put a new policy in place last March, new legislation was signed into effect in July that really affected what books needed to be withdrawn from the shelves and what they were supposed to be looking at. So I can tell you what the process looks like right now, but it's probably subject to change. So right now, if you are a parent or a resident of the community, you can raise an objection to a book that's in the school library and that includes the classroom library or a book that's on the reading list. So it looks like most districts are going to have a committee that will review the books that you find objectionable, and then they will decide whether or not the book is to be removed. In some cases, there will be hearing officers. So there's a young woman who's on my statewide committee who wasn't hearing officer for her discharge. And the hearing officer listens to the objection and reviews the book and makes a decision. That person then makes their recommendation to the school board, which for, well, up until July, had the final say. I have to tell you that in Clay County, there was a dad, you may have seen this in the press. He is linked to No Left Turn, and he has filed objections to more than 400 books.
Oh, my God.
So Clay County is very busy reviewing all those objections. There was also a high school teacher in Escambia County, and this I found surprising because she's responsible for more than 150 book objections. And in fact, individuals helping out these committees that are in place to review books. So we also have Moms for Liberty people in counties objecting to books. And I have to tell you that the end of August, which has passed, but this has not happened yet, districts were supposed to submit to the Department of Education a comprehensive list of all the books that were banned in their district. And that, um, thank you. That list is going to be circulated among all of the districts. So if you're in Sarasota County, which right now is banning four books, you're going to find that there's a list of 200 books that have been banned throughout the state. And what is to prevent a Moms for Liberty person or anybody else looking at that list and saying, "I want those books banned in my county, in Sarasota as well"? Nothing to prevent that from happening. So that's the policy that has been in place up until, say, July. But then what happened was this bill got passed that allowed people, and I'll qualify that in a minute, but allowed people to ask the Department of Education for a special magistrate to hear the objection to the book. Now, the special magistrate is going to be paid for by the district. Doesn't matter whether the district agrees with the objector or not. They're going to pay for this special magistrate to hear the case about the book. The magistrate will decide whether all the policies and laws were followed. They're not going to decide whether the book goes back on the shelf. They're going to make this decision about policies and laws, and then the Department of Education is going to decide whether or not the book should go back on the shelf or not. The only person who can ask for a special magistrate is a parent of a child who's in the school. That's right now. Okay, so this extra thing was, and districts will have to comply with that. We will see. I have to tell you that a school board can also decide that a book is objectionable, and without anybody else complaining, they can remove it off the shelf. You also have, and this happened in Sarasota, the director of materials can decide a book is objectionable, and that person can remove it. So you have a lot of ruling parts here. Who gets to say whether a book is objectionable, whether it ought to be off? And the consequences of these book bans is pretty terrible. First of all, we know that students' rights are being violated. They should be able to read what they want to read, what they can relate to. And even if there's an objection filed in the school, their parents ought to be able to say, "It's okay for my son, my daughter, to read that book." Students are going to find reading a lot less enjoyable, right? So where's their motivation to read, and how is that going to affect their test scores? Don't know. Marginalized students are being targeted and bullied. And there's very little support for them, including the reading materials. You can't have teachers supporting them, guidance counselors supporting them, nobody. You can't have the pride flags in your room, no stickers, nothing, and they don't even have the books. If a teacher violates the book ban, they can be fined $5,000, and they can lose their license. Baffling stuff. And teachers are simply avoiding anything that might be questionable. So they're self-censoring. You have what we call, what Timothy Snyder has referred to as anticipatory compliance, right? They anticipate something will be rejected, bound to violate, so get rid of it. This is terrible. And teaching has become a less desirable workplace for teachers. So we have shortages of teachers. We're going to end up with fewer certified teachers. They're going to water down the requirements. They're going to have paraprofessionals becoming the teacher of record for the classroom. They're going to have diminished teacher quality and an increase in teacher shortages. Okay, our children are losing out. They'll be less competitive. They will not be able to communicate with people who are unlike themselves because they won't have had any information about what these other communities are like. Okay, we eliminated any possibility of understanding our diversity, and that's unfortunate and has consequences, both social and economic and personal consequences for everybody. Teaching used to be an empowering, stable, and well-respected profession. It is no longer. Teachers are being really targeted. And so I hope that we can all find ways to support the teachers and to work on fighting these book bans. Thank you.
So it might be a little hard to hear, so as you're speaking, if you could, you know, try. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. And I am sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Sean Bartel, and I'm currently president of the Sarasota League of Women Voters. Prior to that, I was on the state board for about seven, eight years. How did I survive? There was a lot going on in the state in the last seven years, as you know, with redistricting and just all the stuff going on. And I'm a native Floridian. I'm a Kong. That means I was born in Key West and have lived pretty much everywhere in Florida, but kind of the Naples-Fort Myers area and the Jacksonville area, so I've covered the state. And it's a pleasure to be working with Sarasota League because they're just a dynamic, incredible group of folks. So next, I would like to introduce Dr. Theoni Sublis, who is a professor of education at the University of Tampa, teaching graduate courses in public school law and social justice education for over 20 years. She's dedicated to the preservation of true public education. She's a former Riverview High School teacher. She was educated in Sarasota Public Schools and is educating her daughter in Sarasota County Schools. And I started Sarasota County Schools in third grade, so Altobista South Side, Brookside, Sarasota High. So it's a pleasure to have you here today. And she's going to cover a range of current issues, including PragerU videos and other chaos that's going on.
Sean, with a very nice introduction. Hi, I'm Theoni Sublis. It's a pleasure to be with you today. Can you hear me through this mic? I tend to project anyway, so are we okay with hearing? Okay, wonderful. I first want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for creating this forum so that we can continue to inform the public about the important concepts, content, and laws that are occurring in public education in our counties. So thank you very much, League, and it's a pleasure to be with all of you. And thank you for spending your Saturday morning with us. Sean was gracious enough to give you a little bit of my background, and Jill was talking about the teaching profession. And that's what I do. I train teachers at the University of Tampa for over 20 years. If you're majoring in education and you know at a very young age that that's what you want to study at the university level, and I'm very happy to report that we still have students majoring in education who want to be teachers. And we missed the first week of classes because of the hurricane. So the first week of classes were already canceled. So I got to meet with my seniors for the first time last week, and they are wide-eyed and excited. And that is the power of young teachers because they are still very idealistic and they are very passionate, and they came out of the classroom and they want to make a difference. These teachers want to go back into the classroom and give back what their teachers gave to them. So that community has not disappeared. We still very much have people who want to be teachers. So the more of us in our community who can support those teachers and work against these laws that are keeping people out of the profession for a long period of time. See, that's where it changes. When they get into the classroom for three to five years, and then they realize the weight and the pressure of the politics, and that's what drives them out. So how do we keep them in the classroom? It's through forums like this. It's through education, and it's through voting, League of Women Voters. It's through voting. It's becoming highly aware of what the issues are and making sure that we get those issues out so that we are voting for representatives, legislators, senators, and of course governors in our state who will be supportive of this profession. So I was asked to talk about three different topics today concerning current events in education. The first one is about the Critical Learning Test. You may have read some headlines about the Critical Learning Test. It's a new exam that the state has accepted as a college entrance exam in lieu of the SAT or the ACT. The second topic that I'll be talking about is an update on vouchers. Since the universal voucher system has been passed earlier this year, I would like to give you an update about what's going on with vouchers. And the last one is the curriculum that was recently approved as a supplementary curriculum in the state for teachers to use, and that's PragerU Materials. So those are the three concepts I'm going to talk about. Those three concepts all have a common theme. They're all big money. Every single one of these concepts has a money train that you can follow where people continue, big corporations and private industry continue to make money off the backs of our children using your tax dollars as the incentive to get there. So that's very concerning to me on multiple levels, as a mother, as an educator, as an activist. I'm concerned. So the first two, I'm just going to kind of talk about in very general terms. And then my main topic today is going to be the PragerU Curricula. So I just wanted to bring your attention and start kind of paying attention in the news, on the radio, in the media about the critical, I'm sorry, the Classical Learning Test, CTL. This is a private organization who's developing a standardized exam that is mirrored, if anyone is familiar with the charter school in town, the Classical Academy, it's mirroring towards that Classical Academy charter where it's the classical canon that's being taught with a very Christian conservative foundation in the curriculum. So that is the curriculum at Classical Academy, and if parents are choosing to send their children there, fine. But this is going to be the way that they're going to get those kids into college. The problem, I have many, many problems with standardized tests, but that's not what I'm here to talk about today. The problem with using this particular standardized test is that there's very limited data, that there is reliable information that this exam is measuring college readiness. We have decades and decades of data with the SAT and the ACT. Regardless of how you feel about those entrance exams, there is libraries of data to justify that the results of this data speak toward college readiness and whether or not a student is prepared for a two-year college or a four-year college or a vocational school. That is the idea behind these standardized tests. 1.2 to 1.5 million students across the country will sit for either the SAT or ACT every single year. So you imagine the mountains of data that are available to support the idea of college readiness. This is a very new company, the CTL Company. Only just over 100,000 students have taken this exam. So the data is not there. It is not a rich pool of information to say that this exam is proving that this student is ready for college. So it's saying you can take it in lieu of, take the Classical Learning Test instead of the SAT. It's comparing two very different data sets. So I just want to bring your awareness to that, more so that it's a business. And so when we have our state government saying, "We are going to promote your business", that's a huge concern to me, and that I wanted to bring attention, that attention to you today. I have some more information about Classical Learning Test. If you'd like it, we can continue that conversation, but I'm going to move on because I have a few other topics I'd like to talk about today. The second one is the update on the voucher system. The universal voucher was passed earlier this year, much to the, you know, we worked very hard at informing the public that we do not want this universal voucher passed because the universal part, just to be clear, to make sure you understand, is that it removed the income cap from families. That's what makes it universal. There was a time prior to the new law going into effect that the voucher system was created for low-income families to use money towards a private education. Now that cap was lifted, and anybody in the state can apply for the voucher. So that's the data that I wanted to go and find. So for years, the voucher system has been in place in our state. About 100,000 families take advantage of it. There's about 100,000 families across the state that use the voucher system. As soon as the law passed earlier this year, a 44% increase in approved applications. So it went from 100,000 families to over 380,000 families taking public money directly out of the school and into the private sector. What does 380,000 families translate to in dollar signs? $4 billion in one year alone. $4 billion are being siphoned out of the Public Education Fund in our state and going directly to the private sector. We knew this. We knew this. We had, League of Women Voters had another open public forum where we invited, I guess, Speaker Noreen, I can't think of her last name, but she was from the Florida Policy Institute. And she spoke in a very educated way, and she knew a year ago that it was going to cost $4 billion. I don't know if anybody believed her, because here we are. It was passed, and that's exactly the prediction that the Florida Policy Institute came out with their data and their research. We're on point. What we don't know yet, what we don't know yet is the demographic. That's the data I'm really interested in, but it hasn't been reported yet, but I will report it back to you if you're interested. What is the demographic of those new 200,000 families? What is the income of those 200,000 families? I'm very curious about that because I'm sure it's more than $130,000 a year, which is what it used to be. So I'm very curious about the demographic of the new families who are taking advantage of public money being put into the private sector. You've probably been reading about what some of this money can be spent on, other than tuition, if you've been reading the headlines. I printed out two pages of a 13-page document. I'm not, I'm not big on reading to people, so I'm not going to read to you. This is a very easy, accessible piece of information that you can get offline. But, you know, if you're going to get a high school degree in the state, you have to take your contemporary classes, but you also have to take your electives. You have to take PE and music and theater and art. Well, theater falls under art. But the athletic equipment that can be purchased with these voucher dollars, I found surprising because we don't see this athletic equipment in public schools. The list explicitly says surfboards, which I like because I like to surf. But I certainly, I certainly didn't use public money to buy my surfboard. You can buy a kayak. You can buy a paddleboard, a basketball hoop, ping-pong tables, pool tables. Have you ever seen a pool table in public school? I've never seen a pool table in public school. Now, I'm not saying that I would not like to have all of these things accessible to our PE teachers and students taking PE in our schools, but we're certainly never going to get there if we keep taking $4 billion a year out of our budget. But the private sector can give those types of materials to their students. Here's another one that was really shocking to me when I read the list, and it's about equipment. The money can be spent on curriculum. So curriculum is broadly defined. When I define curriculum, I begin textbooks, things to read, websites, articles. This curriculum is equipment, and you can, you can purchase a personal laptop for your student because that makes sense. A student needs a laptop to study. I understand that. I bought a laptop for my daughter. I paid for it. You didn't pay for it. I paid for it. And she goes to the public school. So she's in public school. We're not taking advantage of the voucher, and I bought her the laptop. But this family over here is taking advantage of the $7,800 voucher and purchasing the laptop through that channel. I take issue with that. I have concern. You can buy a 55-inch TV. Is the student the only one using that TV in the home? I'm curious about that, too. There's a very long list. Now, when you look at the music, you can buy musical instruments. I love the idea of buying musical instruments. I want to put a musical instrument in the hand of every student in this county, not just in the hands of the students taking the money directly out of public schools. That is where I have concern. It's not that I don't want kids that are in the private sector. I don't want to deny them access. That's not the message I'm sending. But by giving them this type of access is denying access to the rest of the kids who are remaining in public schools. That's the concern. So that's the update on vouchers. I will continue to give you an update as soon as I find out more information about the demographic. It hasn't been reported yet, but according to people at the Policy Institute, it's going, it's going to be coming soon. The last topic that I want to talk to you about today is the new middle school standard on slavery and how slavery is to be taught to our middle schoolers in public school. Maybe you've read about it. Maybe you've heard about it on the radio. Maybe you're talking about it with your friends at breakfast. I love that kind of conversation. But if you haven't been exposed to the language of the standard, I'm going to read it to you today. It's just one sentence long. Standards are the law. By law, teachers must teach to the standard. It is the teacher's obligation to the state under the professional code of ethics that they teach every standard in their grade level and test to 80%. 80% is mastery. So we're not getting around a standard if you're a middle school social studies teacher. By law, you're required to teach this standard. AA.2.3 in the Florida statute. Examine the various duties and trades performed by slaves, for example. Agricultural work, painting, carpentry, tailoring. Domestic service, blacksmithing and transportation. With clarification, calling instruction to include how slaves developed skills. Which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit. That's how we want to teach slavery in the state. How are teachers going to teach the standard? The governor came up with a solution, Prager University. Prager U is a curriculum that's been around since twenty nineteen. And usually we, I'm a university professor, Jill is a retired university professor, usually we use that letter U as a representation of a university. So the name itself feels like it's an institution of higher learning, Prager U. It's just this guy, Dennis Prager, who's a conservative talk show host, who added the letter U to the end of his name. There's no association to higher education. He decided he wanted to be funded in the private sector to develop these educational videos. And there's a long library, a huge library of educational videos. That are very far-right, Christian conservative in their messaging. Fine, you can put anything you want on the internet, that's fine, I don't take issue with them existing on the internet. What I take issue with is our government in the state. Saying to all teachers. That this is approved curriculum that you can choose to use in your classroom. You do not have to go through other channels of getting approval, like all of the books that Jill mentioned earlier. To teach in your classroom, the government is already approving it. So like the classical learning test. That the governor has said, I will sell your test in my state. Is saying to Dennis Prager, I will promote your materials at my state. There's so many different concepts covered in Prager materials, I'm going to talk about three today. I'm going to talk about the way feminism is handled, I'm going to talk about the way climate change is handled. And then I'm going to circle right back to slavery and I'm going to end on that note. First thing that I want to say, and I'm going to try to come out and talk to you for a minute because this is really gets out of my skin. Can you still hear me if I come out here and talk to you for this? Sorry, my back's stupid. Oh, can you hear me, people on Zoom? Maybe someone will send me a message.
We'll adjust the camera.
If you can hear me. Can you take the mic with me? I'm only going to stay out here for a minute. But I gotta bring something to y'all's attention. Our current governor, I know you have here and say. The state of Florida is about education, not indoctrination, right? This is what he says. It's not, we are going to take the left-wing woke ideology out of education, how many times have you heard him say this? Every day? Every day, he says this. I have to understand why now. Why this governor has decided that the curriculum, a K through twelve education is steeped. In left-wing liberal ideology. Why now, why today? Because here's a level history lesson. This is not a Republican or Democratic issue. This is a DeSantis issue. This is a problem he has created to try and solve. Because the problem has not existed. We can't say that this is a partisan issue, it is not a partisan issue. How do I know that it's a fact? For twenty-five years, the state of Florida has had a Republican governor. For twenty-five years, the Republican governor has been in charge of that school curriculum. That is our job through the national. The federal constitution, the federal constitution, the US constitution gives states power over public education. It is the governor's job, every year we have a governor, we have a new set of standards. We have the Florida State Standards, remember way back when the assessment test, we had the F cap, the F cap turned into the F S A, the F S A is not a fast test. We have four governors. That are all Republican, all encouraging the standards, but it's this governor today now who's deciding. That it's a left-wing liberal ideology, I have to argue against that. It can't possibly be a partisan issue. I argue that it's a DeSantis issue. So let me move into how he is going to teach this new standard, how is he going to teach this new standard? Before we get into slavery though, I have to say something about feminism and I have to say something about climate change just for a second. I have to redo a quote. From directly from one of the PragerU videos, this one is hot, especially in a room full of women. This one is hot. The concept of feminism is represented in one of these videos. The quote from the video is feminism is a mean-spirited, small-minded. And depressive philosophy. I'm just going to let that sit with you for a moment. Okay, that's all I'm going to say about feminism, I think that you can see a bigger picture in there, that that is the messaging that they want to send to middle schoolers. With this content, alarm, alarm, red flag, red flag. Very similar with climate change. There's a lot of climate denialism in these videos and again, I want to follow the money. So I had to go look for the money, how are these videos, because these are pretty well-developed videos, they're very. Cartoon-y and they feature. Middle school age children trying to figure out the problems of the world and they time travel. They go back in time and they meet Christopher Columbus and they meet Frederick Douglass. So with climate change, I wanted to know how do you make such a well-developed video, it takes a lot of money, how did it get funded? Major financial backers are Dan and Ferris Wilks, who are billionaires in the fracking industry. So this is a major backer of PragerU and now we're talking about climate denialism. So you can connect the dots between fracking and greenhouse gases and carbon emissions. So what kind of messaging do they want sent there? And I think our middle schoolers need to be talking about recycling and repurposing and reusing and redesigning and clean energy. You're not going to see any of that in the PragerU videos. The last one is the most important one, it really speaks, not the most important one, they're all so important. But the one that's talking directly towards this new standard about slavery that just is. Heart-wrenching to me and we have to fight against it, we have to create change and we must remain vigilant, but this is not acceptable teaching in our state to our students. So these children go back in time and they meet Christopher Columbus. And here's Christopher Columbus in this video and Christopher Columbus says, oh, slavery has always been around. Every single country in the world has used slaves to develop its country, that may be true. Does it mean it's good? Are we okay with that? But this is what they have, Chris, as if we have Christopher Columbus's quote, but this is what they have, Christopher Columbus saying in the video, I'm going to read to you again. This is, this is what they have, Christopher Columbus saying. Being taken as a slave is better than being killed, no? I don't have a problem with it. That is the message that Christopher Columbus, one of, however we feel about Christopher Columbus, that he is well-studied in our curriculum. That is the message that they have coming out in the PragerU, U video. Another video specifically about slavery. They go back and talk to Frederick Douglass, abolitionist, Frederick Douglass, for those of you who don't remember from social studies, Frederick Douglass is a. He's the son of a slave and a landowner. And he works his way through the Underground Railroad and becomes a free slave in the north and an abolitionist and is a. Preliminary figure in working with Abraham Lincoln during the Civil War and designing the Emancipation Proclamation. Very important figure in American history. So these kids in this PragerU video go back in time and talk to Frederick Douglass, I'm sitting at the edge of my seat, I can't wait to hear what Frederick Douglass has to say. This is what PragerU has Frederick Douglass saying. While slavery is wrong and evil, it was the compromise the founding fathers had to make. To achieve something good. So they have Frederick Douglass selling slavery as a compromise. This is how they're going to teach the standard. This is the curriculum that they're making accessible to teach the standard. I have one more thought I'm going to share with you and I'm going to close my, close my marks, I'm just. Getting here to get you a little riled up today, to become more active, to go get your friends, to become more active and vote, 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 vote. This is the last one. It's about slave songs. So the kids go back in time and there's some talk about how slaves would sing. It says, this is the quote from the video, slaves sang to rejoice while working in the fields exhibiting happiness. I said, oh, no, 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 because I've read the narrative of Frederick Douglass, a book I'm sure is going to be banned. I've read the narrative of Frederick Douglass, I've read it often to know that he says something in his book about the slave song. So I went digging for it, oh my goodness, a primary source document, can we use those? Directly, it's written by himself, it's just written by. That there's no more primary source document than this, right? So let's see what Frederick Douglass actually has to say about the slave song, I'm going to read you his quote. His narrative was published in eighteen forty-five, twenty years before the Civil War. The life of a slave. This is what he has to really say, from his own words in eighteen forty-five about the slave song. I have often been utterly astonished since I came to the north. To find persons who could speak of the singing among slaves as evidence of their contentment and happiness. It is impossible to conceive of a greater mistake. Slaves sing most when they are most unhappy. The song of the slave represents the sorrows of his heart. And he is relieved by them only as an aching heart is relieved by tears. Tears in my eyes. I wanted to bring those issues to you, I wanted to talk a little bit about the classical learning test, I wanted to give you an update on school vouchers. But I really want to bring your attention to PragerU. Open up your ears, start reading the paper a little bit more when it's talking about PragerU or listening to that news report. Um, and vote, 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 vote for change, thank you for your time today.
So in Sarasota County, the one good thing is that Connor, who's our superintendent. Went through a rigorous process and because the videos have not been approved. By the local school system, you have to, if the teacher wants to use them, they have to go to the principal. Get the principal's approval and then if they get the principal's approval, they have to send a note home. To all of the parents to get sign off. On that, that student being allowed to use the PragerU, see the PragerU video content. So at least there's some fire, Sarasota County right now that haven't been there in the past and. I did originally want to start off this meeting with a video that was on CBS Morning News the other day. I don't know if you were familiar with David Begnow, he's a correspondent for CBS. Um, and he shared a story of his life-changing mentor. Who was his teacher and who was, did speech, you know, public speaking and all the competitions, just won a major award. Um. It was a Catholic school, he was gay and he had Tourette's. And she really pushed him, he became this incredible speaker, but she could tell how sad he was. And so she took him into her office and said, what's going on with you? And he talked to her about being gay, he talked to her about his abusive household that he was living in. And all of the things he was dealing with and she really helped him work through that. And in today's school system, all a teacher can say to someone like David is, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you. I recommend you Google the. The story to see it, um, as a gay woman. It was, you know, what has happened, it's, it's personal to me as well. Next, I'm going to move on to Carol Lerner, she's a retired school social worker and administrator. Who worked in Philadelphia, New York City and New Jersey, she moved to Sarasota eight years ago. And set up Protect Our Public Schools, which later merged with Support Our Schools. She serves there as a director, she is also on the board of the NEA retired. She writes education articles for Critical Times and WSLR and um. Her research, she's done a lot of research on all kinds of stuff, so I just want to welcome Carol here today, thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you so much for having this forum. Great idea, before I start, I, I really have to comment. Um, what Fiona said about Frederick Douglass, that has been bugging me, he would be rolling over his grave, in his grave. If he knew what has happened, do you know that his portrait is in the Department of Education? As one of the anti-woke people that, yeah, Corcoran did that, yeah. It's crazy, they expropriated his ideas, just like they're doing with Martin Luther King. And this is part of the culture war and that's what I'm going to be talking about today. And I can say, ah, the culture war, we know it well in Sarasota. In fact, and not be noticed, but Sarasota's school district was actually the first oldest district. To unleash the twenty-twenty beginning of, of the culture war. Um, I'm going to go into that a, a little later, I want to start though by, by reading something that Ronne Buzini, who's. Here in the front and she, by the way, was also a co-founder of Protect Our Public Schools, which people call POPs. Uh, and she alerted me to, to this, it's a little bit of an historical briefing, but I, I think it's very cool. A local ultra-conservative group met with the Sarasota school superintendent. They came to protest the use of the textbook, the meaning of communism, a high school course, claiming the book was soft and condescending. Rebutted by the superintendent. They charged that superintendent was participating in a conspiracy against them. They accused him of being innovative and modernizing the curriculum. The superintendent played the jazz trumpet, they insisted that was in itself leftist. They were convinced that some of the Sarasota teachers were heavily, heavily involved in the Communist Party. And brought up charges in school board meetings that many were also homosexuals. They developed a hit list of teachers they thought shouldn't be there. One member of the group went into the boys' room and locked himself in a stall so he could eavesdrop and try to collect evidence. He had his wife go into the girls' room and do the same. Sound familiar, right? So this was nineteen sixty-one in Sarasota and it was documented by the University of South Florida, they had a. Digital Commons History Project and they had one of the professors writing an article on that. The superintendent at the time was Dr. Russell F. Wiley, he was a real visionary. And this is interesting, he was the one who implemented desegregation in Sarasota. So that's what all this stuff was, was really about. In nineteen sixty-four, the hostilities got so extreme, including anti-Semitic attacks. On a school board candidate that he just resigned, he couldn't take it any longer. So my message is this, the culture wars have been around, they've been around a long time. In fact, even historians have traced them back to the fourth century. Where, where the Romans used culture wars when, when they were attacking. People who were pagans and they were trying to institute Christianity. Nazism, you could also say was the ultimate culture war. And a lot of, if you go to school board meetings, a lot of the people who speak there often draw parallels. To Nazism, to, to what's, what's happening. in both Sarasota and in Florida in particular, but also in, in the nation. Um. And these ideas are recycled over and over again. In the late sixties, it was sex education. There was a group called Mothers Organized for Moral Stability. They called themselves Moms. So we have the Moms for Liberty back in the sixties, that they had the Moms group. And what did they do? They were trying to get built-in pornography out of the classrooms. In the eighties, it turned more to anti-gay rights and pushing for prayer in schools. Who was doing that? Who was the moral majority? So these are all themes that have happened in our history. And in fact, if, if you look at, um, culture wars, it usually has to do with racism, um, attacks on sexuality, religion. What's behind these? Why do they occur? It's often a resistance to change. Now, currently, um, the right is very concerned about multiculturalism. And that's kind of the, the big general attack when it comes to cultural wars. And, and why is that? Well, they call it the grade replacement theory. They're very worried that multiculturalism is the ruler in, in, in our country. That the number of people, very soon, people of, of color will outnumber white folks. White folks will be a minority. So they, they prey on, on that. Um. The other, one thing that I learned, I, it's people who know me, know that I do a lot of research and I always go backwards to try and understand things. Um, one thing I learned by looking at these groups, it's almost wrong to call it a, a cultural war. They're really talking about civil war. And, and I'm not kidding. I mean, that's, that, that's what these people are talking about. That, that's what they want. I'll go into that a, a little bit more later. So what touched off this round? Like I, I mentioned the, um, sixties, seventies, and eighties. And then we kind of had a lull where there was not, there was stuff going on, but it wasn't extreme. And then in twenty-twenty, it really became extreme. Now, what happened in twenty-twenty that was big? Two, two things happened. And, and they're related. One was the pandemic. And the pandemic causes a lot of insecurity, craziness. You know how people responded? I know how I responded. I'm sure everybody in this room was freaked out. Um, that sets the stage. I don't know if people have read a book by Naomi Klein, which is one of my favorite authors, called The Shock Doctrine. And, and she talked about how, uh, the powers that be use any type of shocking situation. And she used the example of Katrina, of what it did in New Orleans. And, and that's when the school district was taken over because they took advantage of, of what was going on in New Orleans. Because it was not like a functioning society for quite a while. So they took advantage and, and they, and they totally shut down the public school district and totally made it charters, one hundred percent. So that's, that's kind of a small scale of what happened with, with the pandemic. Then the other big thing that happened in, in May of that year was the murder of George Floyd. And then what happened afterwards? Do you remember all the protests all over? There were Republicans, many Republicans were even saying, yes, there's systemic racism in, in our society. So many of the right-wing, super-right wing got really nervous. Um, on July third, Trump gave a speech at Mount Rushmore. It's called the Mount Rushmore Speech. And at that speech, he, he said that the cause of all the unrest was the left-wing teachers and doctrinized students and Marxism. That kind of set the idea in the mind of a lot of people. And what happened six weeks later in Sarasota was very interesting with our Bridget Ziegler, our cultural warrior in chief. She wrote a very interesting Facebook post. Do you remember Rain Pop? Rain Pop was a video, uh, was a company that made educational videos with, which the district had as supplemental material. They made one on the aftermath of, of the George Floyd murder, showing the protests and all. So she made a big deal about that. She ended her post with these words, "Our job is to educate, not to indoctrinate." The next day was a school board meeting and tons, I don't know, fifty, sixty, seventy people came. Mostly on, on the right, because remember it was a pandemic. So not too many people were, were going to public meetings. And made this charge over and over that teachers in Sarasota were indoctrinated students. It grew then the next meeting because other people came out, particularly young people, particularly students of color uh, that were in a high, high school or had recently graduated. And, and then the Proud Boys showed up and the Oatheers showed up. And then we were on national news. That was the start. Sarasota was the start of using school boards and school districts in general as the playground of, of, of this culture war. It was in Sarasota and it was all over. That, then the national news. And that was just the first volley of, of men. Four months a, after, um, Trump gave, gave that Rushmore Speech, Moms for Liberty was formed. Um, largely, I think, by Christian Ziegler. I think he, he was really the main person behind it, more, more than anybody. So in this war, there are three levels. There's the ground troops, Moms for Liberty, the, the Proud Boys, um, locally, the Zen Movement, which was a combination of, of Proud Boys and Moms for Liberty types. Then you have the ground generals. Uh, the people kind of whipping it up. Our governor is, is one of them. Michael Flynn, Kristen Ziegler. And sort of, um, more lower level people like Connie Bruni, which is the person who did the baby, baby killer poster. And is, is a big player and is trying to take over, they, and almost took over the local Republican Party. Um, then you have like the kind of Uber generals, funders, and spooners. These are the activist think tanks and particularly the, the Claremont Institute. Um, so the question is, DeSantis on his war on woke, where, where did that come from? Florida is, is the state where woke comes to die, is, is his favorite line. Well, it's, it's, it's interesting how the Claremont Institute, which is in California, in woke California, is really very much the center of it. And it's the Claremont Institute that partnered with DeSantis. That's one of the reasons we have, um, the New College, that situation. That was, as everyone has said, a hostile takeover. But the people who engineered it were the Claremont people. Three of the trustees on, on the new trustees on, on New College are from Claremont Institute. That's Kessler, Spalding, and Rufo, who was a, um, the two, Kessler and Spalding are regular fellows. Rufo was a short-term fellow, but he, he actually is still very connected with Claremont and says that's where he actually got all his ideas on critical race theory and such. Um. Then who are DeSantis's advisors on this woke stuff? It's again, Rufo. Uh, person by the name of Scott Yenner, Dr. Scott Yenner. And I'm gonna go into him and William Allen. And this is interesting, this fits into what Theon said. William Allen is the person who all the people on, on the Standards Writing Committee said, actually wrote that, that, um, standard that, that Theon wrote about. Enslaved, um, you know, learning from, from, from their slavery and such. Um. So Claremont is funded by a man by the name of Thomas Klingenstein. He's a billionaire. And he's chairman of, of the board. He is an extremist. He, um, did a series of videos called The War. And in it, he says, we're advocates of civil war and we have to win that, that war. The fellows are almost all men. Ninety-eight percent of them are men. There are only like two women in, 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 in the whole group. And they're extremists. They're total, total extremists. The other funders are the DeVos family and a bunch of other billionaires. So this is funded by, by the billionaire class. Now, this Dr. Scott Yenner is really interesting because he's one of the actual advisors to, to DeSantis. So he is not an educator, but he's taken on education as a specialty. He's actually a political scientist. And he's a political science scientist at Boise State University, but he's on, on leave now because the Claremont Institute asked him to set up a post in Tallahassee. So he's right in Tallahassee. He was welcomed by the governor and his wife and a whole bunch of other Claremont people. So they are playing a major, major role. But that's, he's a pooh. He's a nut. When, when I read his stuff, I wasn't sure whether I should laugh or cry. At Boise State, there are mass protests about him because he said that women do not belong in engineering, medicine, law, or trade. Their role is to get married and have children. He called career women more, quote, more medicated, metalsome, and quarrelsome. So he, he writes this article called Education: How to Destroy and Recover. And he lays out a whole scheme of destroying education, really like blocks it up. He's funding everything. Uh, eliminating unions. He says that teachers should have no certification, anybody that's gonna be as mature. And it's extreme stuff, but that's the mild part. It's what he wants to replace it with. That's, that's like, like crazy. So he has two tracks. He has what he calls, and he uses these words, the E track. And he says that should be eight percent of students and it should be mostly boys.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. And those are the ones, those are the only ones that should go on to college. So he wants to cut colleges back from, he uses the quote, like forty-six percent of students now now go to college to eight percent of students, again, but mostly boys. Um, and the colleges, there should only be two majors in, in college. Either business-related majors or STEM-related majors. A liberal arts college, in fact, even, I think in his case, he, he, he would not like what's, what's going on at, at New College, the, the, the replacement, even though he says it's all for it. But, but, listen, listen to this. This is a quote from him of what the rest of the students and in this case, the boys would go on to trade. So that's, that's where like all the boys would go. The girls, they go on to marriage and have babies. And then this is a quote where he, he describes this school. Quote, "Students could learn to build and shoot guns and learn how to grow crops and prepare them for meals. Every male student should learn to skin an animal and every female to milk a cat." Now, this is in an article that is part of a book that just came out two days ago. I actually purchased it reluctantly. I didn't wanna support it, but I, I wanted to read the entire book because this was one.
Pick it back.
Yeah. So he has a plan for Florida, for, for university level also. So he puts out these reports. He's written about twelve reports on different states. Uh, how to rework higher education, how to rework K for twelve. So this is his plan for Florida. So he wants to shut down or totally defund and let them like, whether on the bind says all Florida public universities, colleges and universities, except for University of Florida, which will only teach STEM subjects and like engineering, physics and such. And Florida State University, which will only teach business subjects. So that's, that, that's his plan. So the other interesting thing, these think tanks are like, you know, DeSantis is not just making this stuff up. It's not coming out of his head. It's coming from these people and he's grabbing it. And then he's sort of exciting them because he, he implements it. And that goes further ideas. So they do this little, little dance together. But all these think tanks, all these activist culture war think tanks are all ancestral. Heritage, Leadership Institute, that's, that's the one that Bridget Ziegler is, is now the vice president. Um, like the, uh, let's see, so Hillsdale President, Hillsdale College, I think everyone probably has heard of that. The president's Larry Har. He was a founder of the Claremont Institute. And he's now really still leading it as the vice chair on the board, is also in the, of Heritage Foundation. The Heritage Foundation was founded by a man by the name of Paul Dweigert, who was like a major cultural warrior. And he was a close friend and they worked very closely together with Morton. He worked with Morton Blackwell, who is the head of the Leadership Institute that Bridget Ziegler, as I said, is, is part of. Um. All of these groups support and fund groups like Moms for Liberty. So it's all this like cost thing. So what are the lessons that, that we can learn from this? You know, what are the lessons I learned? The one I, I learned is that they are really talking about ushering in fascism. It's not just culture war. And if you don't believe it, look, look at New College. New College, the content of it now is, is in that direction each day, but more so. And it was that model of destroying an institution, taking it over and replacing it with content. The interesting thing is some of these people say, hey, we don't really wanna totally privatize education. We wanna use that as a tool to, um, kind of bring down education. But we're fine with just taking over the public schools. And they could also actually use this new vouchers bill to, to do both. Where it would be very easy because it's not just that, it's not vouchers anymore. It's education savings account. So the money is following the child. You could actually order that for every single kid in, say, the state of Florida and to, and to take it over. So that's, that's one thing. There's good news though. Culture war is not a winning. It was on a micro and a macro level. On a micro level, but what has happened in Sarasota? They did all these horrible things, fired the superintendent, uh, got rid of Character Strong, uh, which was social emotional learning. And then they wanted to put the bromian in and people said, we've had enough. And the whole tenor, tenure of meetings has changed since Sarasota. Um, the people that support education have actually gained the narrative. But you could have a perfect school board and in the election, if say, we do regain control, we still have everything that Theon talked about. So it's still gonna be horrible. Um, the, the last, um, lesson that, that I learned that we can't stay in our silos anymore. It can't be just education. The world is falling apart. The climate change is new here in Florida and in the other states, uh, in, in the nation with, with the end of Roe, but, but with the establishment of all these six-week um, proportion bans. Um, proportion bands. Uh, with the housing crisis that that we have, with people leaving Florida because they can't either afford housing or or they can't. Um, they can't afford homeowners insurance. So we have to work together. We have to work together in coalitions if we're really gonna bring about change. If if we're gonna really get enough people registered to close this gap that that currently exists. So so there's there is good news. I think we can do it. And I'm right out there fighting both New College, K twelve. And generally also the other issues I try to combine also. Thank you.
I just wanna urge everyone to urge all of your friends and relatives in Sarasota County. If you've never attended a school board meeting, attend one. Because you read about it in the newspaper, you know, you see a clip on a TV news station. But actually sitting there and listening and hearing what's said and what the reactions by different board members are. I have to tell you was just so eye-opening for me. Uh, I started out in the TV news business back when I used to go to all these meetings that were never like this. And then I started attending the Sarasota School Board meetings and and seeing it to person is just a whole different thing. Um, I totally agree with the fact that we have really got to have coalitions. We have to remove the silos. Everybody needs to be working uh together on the major issues that are affecting us. And Carol talked a lot about New College and we're very fortunate today to have Mila Wimbush here. She is a fourth year New College student. She's studying political science and environmental studies. Uh, she's worked at the MCF campus with leadership positions and student government. And the Council of Green Affairs. And I think, are you also uh working on creating a League of Women Voters chapter?
Yes.
Yes. So so glad to have you here to give your perspective of what you've seen in your time.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Mila Wimbush. I hope everyone can hear me. And I also hope everyone's able to see the screen. Can't hear.
Or you can just take it.
Let's go. Is it a little bit higher?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'm filling in for Grace Tina. She was originally supposed to be here if you saw on the docket. But she had a last minute LSAT exam, so they caught her with that one. So I'm here instead, but Grace is a really great friend of mine and colleague. We work together in student government. So I'm really glad to be here and thank you for the opportunity of me. So I'll be talking a little bit about what's going on at New College. My introduction kind of explained a little bit about me, but I am a fourth year returning student. I've been at New College ever since my first year. So I've really seen a change. I came in right as COVID in twenty twenty start. So my first year was quite rocky, but I guess it's rocky again now too. Uh, so I'll be talking a little bit about what we're seeing. So to start off, I have some of the presidential updates. Right now, there is the Presidential Search Committee. There's three candidates. Currently, Richard Corcoran, he was our interim president. He is one of the candidates, as you may know, which. Is a little controversial. Um, this was delayed because of the hurricane. But the Board of Trustees is hoping to vote during the first week of October. And just so you know, those meetings are public. They're also online as well. But anyone is welcome to attend those from the community, both students as well as non-students. There's also a note on the committee. It's typical that the student president serves as a student trustee. Who also sits on the Presidential Search Committee. However, the chair chose another student, a student who's there at New College for only one semester. And did not hold any student government leadership positions prior. So it is a little, it is a little bit difficult to understand how that position would vote from the student. But the student body has been trying to get as much input through surveys, through talking to students. So our duty to at least have a more unison outlook. It's also the search committee has narrowed it down to three candidates. So like I said, hopefully we will know. Who our new president is going to be shortly, especially since this was the hostile takeover from February to now. So onto gender studies. If anyone was able to see the August Board of Trustees meeting. There was a topic about gender studies in the program on campus brought up towards the end. So in the most recent meeting, towards the end, there was a call to a vote that was not discussed previously. Which meant that the board members did not have time to discuss the matter, collect evidence. Or even prepare a discussion during that open time. A vote was called to terminate the gender studies program entirely. That was called by trustee Rupo. Which is problematic because of two reasons. One, it's questionable whether the significant actions without publicly noticing it. Gives everyone enough time to make a discussion before voting, because it was just brought up in the business section. There was no time. Second of all, the Board of Trustees' actions and the regulations fall under the Board of Governors. And there's a lot of rules and regulations in terms of termination of a contract or a AOC. That has to go through the faculty union. It's legally bound. So it appears that that was not done by any of those rules or standards. So now there's the issue of the lack of trust from the Board of Governors. Also, on the administrative side, we do have a lot of new hires. So athletic coaches, because we did just get a huge athletics department and it's still growing to this day. New food coordinators, dean of students, um, positions in the student body. Has historically always been able to participate in the search committee for those. But a lot of these new hires have not considered student input whatsoever. And it's really been up to the higher administration for these new positions. And also, the all the new hires in the past, surprisingly, many of them already have children attending college. Some of which are out of school, other college. Wow. Um, and so it's a little bit back and forth. And if we could go on to the next slide really briefly. Thank you. Okay, so I have some updates on our student affairs issues. One of the biggest issues which this made public news over the summer is the housing crisis that we went through. The first main problem was a mold situation. Which nowadays has pretty much left more students without housing. First, the students were told that they were being kicked out of the upperclassman housing. That was assigned for them and that many of us had already been put into months prior. Because there was all these athletes coming in, they decided that they wanted to take the Jordan Gold, which are the the suites. The upperclassman apartments essentially of the campus. They wanted to take the people who were in those already, move them out and make that where all the athletes would stay. In sort of a community building, um, they all have the same schedule. They all get up early. They have work to do kind of outlook. They also proceeded to do major renovations over the summer. Lots of renovations which students have asked for in previous years, just for the sake of cleaning up a building. New paint, fixing things like AC problems that have been complaining about for a while. But then all of a sudden, it it just happened over the summer when they were all going to move in. As for the pay dorms, which are the problem with mold. What happened was over spring break of last year, there was mold testing done in the dorms. And the mold report was shared at the students or shared with the president's office first. And it had not been discussed outside of that office months later. So now we're looking at the end of May. And people were also already deciding that building to live in. So student governance, specifically Grace and her colleagues, were able to get their hands on the mold report, which should be public knowledge. And it had, quote, should not be occupying any of the paid dorm. Three dorm buildings on campus that had historically housed first and second year students. So the plan was to put some students in paid dorms, the ones that were given the the thumbs up to live in. Because each dorm was supposedly tested specifically. However, this is about forty students. And New College is then a super big school. We're looking at about six hundred, a little under seven hundred students with the class. But that is a pretty significant percentage, especially when most of that is incoming first years. Until the second report back came back, then they said that you cannot put any students in those buildings whatsoever. So this is when the college had to move to hotels, because they realized that they promised too many beds and they didn't have. So firstly, started with one hotel. It was the Homes Suites. It's about a mile off campus. The five-minute drive, but if you don't have a car, it's about twenty to thirty minutes in the Florida heat and the rain. And it's also on a very dangerous road with all the cars to make by. We went from one hotel to now three. A lot of students who got their room assignments didn't get a new room assignment until two days, until moving in. Which meant that they thought they were living in a in a paid dorm and then they were assigned a hotel. A lot of students showed up to campus and were told to move four different times. Their parents had no idea where to plan for them. And they had to repack, sell furniture, meet new people and figure that all out within forty-eight hours of moving in. Most recently, also with movement, there was an issue with our orientation leaders. I believe the Herald Tribune had an article about this, which some of y'all may have seen recently. It was about the pins and just identity expression on campus. Anything from pride pins to a Black Lives Matter pin, just something the size of a quarter on someone's shirt or their pants or a backpack. Was not approved. It went against what they were supposed to wear as an orientation leader. And this was because they were defined as ambassadors of the school at the time for all the new athletes in first years moving in. Which is also not their title. They're orientation leaders who were trained. They were there to do a job. And then as soon as they got on their site, they were told they had to remove their pins. Um, and they only were able to wear a shirt and a name tag. So they were told that by the dean of students. Following that, so the students moved them off their uniforms and onto their pants instead of their shirts. They were told their shirts had to be only the name tag. Then the rules changed again, saying they weren't allowed to wear pins at all. Despite the fact that there's nothing in writing, saying that they even had to wear the uniform to begin with. We've also started to meet a lot of the new athletes over the last couple of weeks. The hurricane definitely messed up everybody's getting back to school schedules. But it's become pretty clear that a lot of the athletes that came to our school were also not told everything they should have been. Some of the things like having facilities, our campuses never had a sports team. If it was, it was usually a club, but we've never had sports teams. So something like a gym or a basketball court, a baseball field, that's not there. And so they're not practicing at our campus and if they are. What's been put up has been put up in the last like week or so now. But it is not, it's not a true practicing facility at all. One of the biggest things that we noticed first is that many of them have also planned on majoring in programs that New College does not have. Which it's it's a lot of them, it's business, accounting, uh, finance, things like that. They're programs that we don't have, that we haven't offered in the past or have the ability of offering them to them. Because we do have a major faculty problem, which I'll talk about in a second. Um, but with that still being said, there is a good portion of the incoming class that we have noticed are really driven. Unique individuals are academically focused, so that shouldn't all into one thing. But moving on to faculty loss, uh, this is also a huge, huge uh media break for a while. The faculty loss is historic. We've lost around thirty percent of faculty this year alone. And this year has really just been the end of semester and then the summer term. So it's not even a full academic year. A lot of it's a mix of pre and leave, but also it's professors that decide to leave without pay. And some that just split, just bring up quit and have looked for jobs elsewhere, which many of them have been able to find. But it's really sad. Since the numbers are so small at New College, we have some comparisons to other universities. For instance, at Florida Gulf Coast University, if they lost thirty percent, that would equal about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty professors. And if you compare that to USF, it would be about six hundred and fifty faculty members. And that's pretty much just in the summer alone. So as you can imagine, the students are a bit stressed, um, myself included. I'm a fourth year student, which means I'm a thesis thing. I have to graduate in the spring with a certain number of classes that I need. And unfortunately, a lot of them are not offered. There's visiting professors. Who don't know the same academic system from either a different university that they went to. Or maybe they haven't taught before and this is their first chance from their PhD. So they can't always offer required coursework, whether that be upper-level classes. Or something very specific for different majors that we have. Many students, especially third and fourth years like myself, are also struggling to have the members. To take classes that we need, to build our thesis committees, to help us, just in general. Which then adds additional stress onto the students, which is something that students shouldn't have to worry about. They should just be going to class. They shouldn't have to worry about not being able to have the classes they need, not being able to have housing. Just simple security that the school should provide. At the end of the summer, we were given a presentation on this by the provost's office. And there were a couple AOCs that actually didn't have any professors at all. One of them being Environmental Studies slash Science, which is also one of my areas of concentration. So this semester, I've been able to take zero environmental-based classes. Um, and I need a handful to graduate. So we're gonna count this spring on that one. Um, so we do have to find last minute visiting professors and that search is still going on despite us being two weeks into the semester. I guess three weeks now, but it's only the second week of class, so we're not seeing all the full effects right now. But there is an extreme amount of third and fourth year students who have transferred, withdrawn, left. I think in the spring, in terms of graduation, we'll really see who's staying. Who needs to add another semester even just to graduate from New College because of the way their plan for it to rail. But it's a little bit about us. I also included one of our um, one of our protest photos here. So hopefully you're able to support the school in any way. There's a lot of students who are really just struggling right now. But we're all trying our best and we realize that a lot of the incoming class isn't all bad. It's kind of pinned against us sometimes the way the media does it, but we're trying our best to to make it work.
All right, thank Mila so much because um Grace just found out the day, like the day before yesterday. That she had to take this LSAT this morning. And so yesterday, I'm like, oh, I've gotta find a new college person. And and Grace had put the whole presentation together. And me and last night stepped up and learned the whole presentation and volunteered to be here today. I need hope for the future. She's here in the room along with Grace, Olivia and several other great new college students who are doing a a lot of work. And um, so I know we all went a little long, but there was so much information. And I thought I knew a lot, but there was so much I didn't know. So I feel really good about being informed at this level. We are gonna open it up for some questions, so um. If y'all have a, I don't know how far I can go here.
I either read about the book banning all of something being applied to the public libraries.
Yes.
Do we know if that's a book? I guess it is.
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked that question. And in fact, um, one of the things that that's happened, I mean, I I cut my talk short. Um, I just thought we had up to ten minutes, so I only went that long. Um, I have a handout to give you that shows some of the things that people are doing around the country. But also in the state as. but also in the state as well as in Sarasota to try to fight some of the book ban. So I'll, I'll leave that maybe at the table over there somewhere for you to pick that up. But insofar as the public libraries, the public libraries, when all the banning started, the public libraries started having these banned book clubs. And they were going through like December, I want to say last December. And then we noticed they weren't happening anymore. Because I was looking at the calendars, they weren't around anymore. And they were being threatened. They had, they had people like the Moms for Liberty coming in and looking at their bookshelves to see what was there. And then they would go up to the, the desk and say, this should not be in that section. And they were also putting books that would probably be inappropriate, be considered inappropriate for young adults. They were taking them out of the adult section and putting them in the young adult section and saying, why is this here? I mean, they, they are doing some really underhanded things. So the libraries are under threat. They are definitely under threat. Last year, I put together a panel with folks from the Freedom, Florida Freedom to Read Project. You may have heard about that. And Adam Tritt, who does Foundation 451, he distributes some of the banned books around the state, including in Ben and Jerry's Ice cream parlor, where they have a little banned book section. So I put that together and I called the Florida Library Association saying, you know, maybe your association would like to be on the panel. And I was told, oh, no, that won't affect us. Well, I have a feeling if I called them today, they would be very much interested in participating because there is quite a bit happening in those public libraries.
Or would they because of the public funding?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm saying, or would they participate because they rely on public funding?
They, they do rely on public funding.
Would the, the legislature or the government?
That's right. Their budgets will be cut. Their budgets will be cut. The libraries will be closed. You know, they are getting all kinds of threats. So it's, it's a very dangerous time.
I looked at, I read in the, over there, there's a bookstore over on the line and what's the name of that street? At eight o'clock that we have a bookstore with only banned books.
Okay, the name of that bookstore is, the name of that bookstore, because it's on this candidate that I have to, it's called This Bookstore Kills Fascists.
All right, additional question. Here we go.
It's not a question, but I'm an NCF college mom, I'm an alum. And I just wanted to mention, there are two organizations, if you want to help new college kids, the New College faculty, the New College staff is Nuvo Collegial Alliance. They are collecting funds for supporting some of the kids who've had legal issues and there are maybe more legal issues coming directed towards actual students. We know that one student was forced to withdraw. He saw Stephen Walker's article, it came out in Loomington last night, that there is a civil action against New College, the new faculty, the new sort of, the new staff with the Department of Justice. So we have a civil action, action coming, coming case, federal case coming against them, which is directed basically at Rupo. But there's Nuvo Collegial Alliance and there's also NCFEDU Freedom, which is a retired alumni who are also collecting funds to help some of the issues that are probably from the students. If you want that information, get it from me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? We're good?
Just your general question, because I'm all, but. If we should have a drastic change with the next election cycles, not just one, but two, we have new school boards, do we see some of these things returning to normal? Can, can, can there be a brighter horizon or are we going to continue to cycle down?
I'm gonna let someone else answer this, but I want to speak after going to the school board meetings, when Vermillion and everything started to happen and the league was very involved. We had incredible thoughts, letters and other stuff going out about Vermillion, about the superintendent search and other stuff. The audience in those school board meetings totally shifted to where it was eighty percent people who really care about public education and twenty percent of the people who are in Ziegler's Court. So it really shifted and so we all just need to urge everyone to be very, very active.
The one thing we have to do is we have to change the legislation and the governorship. Because as I said before, we could vote in the best school board going, but we have all these horrible laws. So that's, that's our, you know, so it's a double challenge. It is amazing what, what we've done and it's because of a lot of people in this room and it's just people of the main groups organizing, support our schools, the Education Caucus of the Democratic Party, who will be the organizer of this, but people came out. So now we have to figure out how to get even more numbers out to those good candidates and that's being worked on. I think we're coming up with some pretty good candidates. But it'll take time. It'll probably at least take, take two cycles. But we, we can't just view it as a local school board thing. We, the legislature is particularly important, the gerrymandering makes it hard. But we still have to work around that.
Yeah, I agree that state legislature is critical, but I also want you to know that there's a referendum partisan school board elections. And we have to get out and vote, make sure that we have candidates who have the interest of the community at heart, in their hearts, rather than the interest of their political party. That piece of legislation also says that the person who is running for the school board election does not have to live in the county where they are running. So we could ask someone from Miami Dade, Spadia, any of the counties, run for school board in Sarasota. And it's only if the person wins the election that they would have to move there. So this is, like I said before, this is a very dangerous time. I also want to mention, I, I'm not as optimistic because with all of these kids being pulled out from vouchers, they're all learning in separate silos. And so you have, you know, kids learning, well, it's a class of both the Christian nationalist silo and you have unfortunately an African American silo, maybe an Hispanic silo, maybe a progressive silo. You've got everybody in their own little space, they're all vado, they're not communicating with each other. So even if we get the school board we want, even if the legislature changes, we've already got a bunch of kids who have been indoctrinated into thinking the way one little group thinks and they now have the opportunity to communicate with each other. So I am fearful and I really am. I hope I'm wrong, but I am very concerned.
Just be careful if you think that way. Don't turn it into, there's nothing we can do.
Oh, no, never.
Yeah.
That's not chill. Well, I know.
Just to clarify my, my understanding, that's a constitutional amendment on the ballot in 2024, which was put there by the legislature to make the, oh, uh, school board elections not partisan and to make it so they don't, now they have to move there if they selected, but yeah. So we really gotta actively educate people that that is a bad amendment. And I can tell you from the past, working with the League of Women Voters, when we have gotten the message out there on, don't take the bait amendment eight, we were able to convince people not to vote for the bad amendment. So we've all got to get out there and really educate people.
John, I can add one thing to that. There is already a paper that the State Education Act team has written and it is on partisan school board elections, why some people are in favor and why the league is against it. And that can be accessed from the Florida League website. So it's a downloadable document.
Great. And then also, I guess some of you might like to know, Michael Flynn is having a meeting in Venice on the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I might have to take Dramamine or something for that. So I would joke if I went there, but you know, you might be interested in that. But we've gone way over time, but it's been, I think it's been an incredible session. I want to thank all of you. We can stop.
Yeah, yeah.